All right, we are back at our last work session of the chapters. And we'll begin with a presentation on implementation, Chapter 11.
All right, so I actually get to present to you all this evening instead of just kind of listening to the wonderful staff here lead the charge. And they have done such a wonderful job since the start of this project and couldn't be more thankful to be on the team with them. So I'm kind of doing the wrap up here for you all this evening and really kind of talking into implementation, which is the culmination of all the substantive chapters. This is kind of your one stop shop on where to go for what the policy guidelines and implementing actions will be as we move forward in Hoco by Design. So I'm going to be going over some highlights of this chapter and then turning it over to our consultant, Matt Nunkester, who actually has been here from the beginning as well and has taken this journey with the team. So I'm looking forward to hearing from you two as we wrap up this final part of our process and get your perspective on the implementation work based on some of the work and experience you've had in your projects across the nation. So there are three really implementing actions coming from Hoco by Design. First and foremost, and probably the heaviest lift, will be the zoning and land use development regulations. Whenever we do a general plan like this, it's followed up with text amendments to help implement the plan within the zoning code, as well as map changes that are necessary so that way we have the those actions covered geographically. And then we also have to update other regulations that are pointed to from the zoning, such as your subdivision regulations that we've been talking about, forest conservation, anything like that that would be an implementing action coming out of these regulations. And then the gateway master plan. This is well underway as far as trying to get consultants on board to help guide us into this project, to do a master plan for this area that has been underutilized and can be a great asset to the Columbia, Greater Columbia area for both housing and commercial development. And then last but definitely not least, kind of the ruling document over all of this, the numbers that really pace development for Howard County is the adequate public facilities Part of implementation and the documents for the planning process are also our other plans that we use as guidance as we move through this. And also, these documents not only offer guidance, but are actually really some of the rubber meets the road implementing strategies. The first one, capital improvement program, and this is the budget that you all set annually for projects to move forward within Howard County. Many of these are from the master plan itself, the adequate public facilities ordinance, as I said, the zoning regulations, subdivision and land use regulations, and the complete streets policy. So we'll be working with Office of Transportation as they go to implement those complete streets policies that they've discussed. Our historic guidelines, our design manuals for Route 1, Route 40, and Clarksville Pike. And then again, the gateway plan, water and sewer master plan, green infrastructure network, our land preservation program, our parks and recreation program, transit, all of the things that we utilize to move forward as implementing documents as part of this general Also, we are required to do annual reporting. And this is required by state law. I believe they initiated this law as part of the smart, green, and growing legislation in the mid 2000s. And basically, every jurisdiction in the state of Maryland has to submit an annual planning report that outlines all of the activities from the development pipeline for each jurisdiction. And so this is what we have been doing as far as our DMS program, where we have gone ahead and annually update those numbers for our smart growth goals. We track our measures and indicators and report on adequate public facilities within this document. We also attribute to what is in the priority funding area and what is out of the priority funding area. The state prescribes this test for the annual planning report, and then our report in Howard County takes it one step further. We do this yearly, as I said, and that demonstrates the county's commitment to growth and conservation that would be outlined in Hoco by Design, and will meet the state and local reporting requirements. And as I said, we do this for our county's development monitoring system, which is very similar and more robust in some measures than the state's annual planning report. And we're actually required to do a major review every five years. There's a mid-cycle performance that the state requires as part of the annual planning report, where every five years you go through and say, what are the development trends that have happened over the course of your plan? The status of the implementation tools that we've utilized, we'll be reporting on that in a more robust manner. We'll identify any significant changes to existing programs. So we would look at what zoning changes have taken effect over those years, if there've been any additional map changes as part of implementation, financing programs. So this will be necessary to achieve the vision and policies of the general plan during this timeframe. And it really will take five years at the beginning to, it's kind of a really great point in time, you'll finally start seeing the results of the plan, that implementation on the ground. Because even though the plan will be adopted in 2023, we really won't see projects come through the development review process until next year, and then really when the comprehensive rezoning is even complete. So once it gets through the entitlement process, which could take several years, that's when you'll really start to see some of the zoning and development implementation really start to occur. So five years is really a good point in time to kind of see, all right, how is your plan performed over that timeframe? And then during this time, we'll also look to identify any barriers, such as laws, regulations, requirements, or market conditions that maybe have really impeded plan implementation. And then we'll look at all of these as a summary, I'm sorry, I apologize, future land use changes and issues, and then a summary of all amendments to the general plan. So again, per state law, you do a general plan amendment every 10 years. So that's the cycle we've been on, and it's a 10-year planning document for a 20-year planning horizon. So we're trying to look out 20 years into the future. Our planning horizon's 2020 through 2040, but we'll be doing this plan, as I said, every 10 years, either updating it or a complete overhaul, kind of looking at where has things, where have things changed in the county? What have our codes done that we may want to change moving forward? What are the overall dynamics from a land use perspective, from a transportation perspective, from an implementing policy perspective? So that's what that 10-year cycle will help us do, and that five-year benchmark will help get us to that point as well. So the implementation matrix that we have in the document, which is the bulk of the chapter, will be used to track progress in the mid-cycle reporting and what's been included accomplishments throughout the year to year. And this matrix lists all the policies within the plan. And there are 78 policies within the plan located in the implementation matrix with 323 actions. 133 of these are ongoing with 137 midterm and 53 long-term. And then this won't just be done by DPZ in and of itself. We have 24 implementing agencies that'll be assisting with us, sometimes we're the lead, sometimes those other agencies will be the lead. If you can get to the next slide. And the county's departments and offices directly involved with the implementation of Hoco by Design will be in the following ways. They'll be looking at conducting or coordinating analysis and planning duties, developing functional plans, and those are water and sewer master plans, sidewalk plans, transportation plans. We'll be developing new programs and initiatives from this, evaluating various legislative changes, preparing budget requests, again, to be consistent with the plan, and this will come forward during the CIP process. And again, coordinating with the state and other local jurisdictions as part of these efforts. And so again, this is the matrix that I talked about with the various policies and actions for the plan. And again, as I said, you know, we have, there's a lot of policies in this plan, and this implementation matrix is the culmination of all of it. And so now with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Nunkester with some final thoughts on his role and what he sees with the plan.
All right, thank you very much. And let me first just say thank you all for having me back in person. I really do appreciate the opportunity. And it just felt appropriate to come back and be face to face with you like we were in 2020, all the way back in 2020, when we started and kicked off this process. So what I wanted to do is just provide some additional remarks, broaden the category or the definition of implementation, to talk a little bit about what you have coming on before you now. It's a difficult task, having to take this document, go through the amendment process, and then hopefully start to do the other implementation that was spoken about earlier. So with that, I was also excited during the transportation to hear mention of a Venn diagram, because all good planners love them, and so I thought I'd start with one myself. And so this is one of the very first slides that we had back in the planning process, and it was, how are we going to get this thing done? And I think we've honored this pretty well. We started out with the community engagement, and unless you tell me that there's been something different recently, it is still the largest public engagement process that's been done for a plan in Howard County. I haven't been told there's anything bigger or fresher from that. We do also have on the data and analysis, I thought we did a lot of truth testing during the planning process. I had the term visioning is great, hallucination is dangerous. We really used a lot of the data and synthesis to test some of our ideas. You know, if your eyes need to be even more worn down, I think there's 419 pages of background data and emerging trends that also formed a foundation for our analysis. And then we had our best practices, and that's really from using staff and their experiences as well as your partners in the region, as well as our consultant team. And that's what, just to remind you, what was so exciting about our consultant team was, while we have national experience, we're really grounded locally. And so just to make sure I don't forget anybody, we had ACDS, Phil Gottwals on agriculture. We had Biohabitats helping us on the environment, Meaden Hunt on transportation, Mahin Riekel on community design and some of the focus area studies. RC Elko was our economic and market consultant. We even had Uriyeven do a tour of duty with us about growth management and implementation. And so we felt really confident in the team that we had and that we brought forward. So in the next slide, you'll see, though, that really what it comes down to is, the process is over and the state the obvious, it's all about the document right now. As you could imagine, just through the conversations that have occurred, and I'm going all the way back to August of 2021, when we had the first big ideas come out. When I mentor young planners, I tell them, nothing's controversial till it's in writing. Well, here we are in writing, and now it's when the passion comes in, because we can see it, we can react to it, we know we have to do something with it. So for tonight, as well as the seven meetings you've already had and the two public hearings that you've already had, it is all about the document as we go forward from here. But I do just want to mention, just so that you understand some of the thinking of how we got to this process, we did really ground ourselves back into that community engagement. And I really learned a lot during this plan process, we learned a lot during this planning process, and we tried to apply it in the document that you see in front of you now. So all the way back to July of 2020, you see that there was a constant approach and a process that was full of feedback loops, and we were doing a couple of different things. We were trying to inform people about what was going on. We tried to educate them about specific topics and get feedback on it. There was a lot of collaboration that had occurred, and then we looked for feedback. And that's really what we were trying to do through all of these processes. And really, I can tell you at least for myself, and I think for staff as well, that the confidence that we had bringing the document that we do have before you now was because we really felt like we listened, and we tried to balance the different things that were out there. It doesn't mean everybody got what they wanted, there had to be shared wins, but really, that was the method to the madness of how we got to the document we have right now. And so to that end, just to make sure everybody understands on the same page, this document's actually gone through three iterations. So we had the planning theme chapters that back in May to September, I think it was, of 2022, we had brought out to the public and got an additional comment on. And then we had the planning board and public draft, and then who knows what the council draft will look like, right? That's what the amendment process is for. But there's one thing here, just to make sure, because I heard some comments in previous meetings about how big this document is and the like, it got bigger every time we revised it, because we had more comments, there was more desire to explain things, to justify things that we had in there. So with each iteration of the document, it did tend to grow as we went through this planning process. And so again, I think they stopped tracking it in February, because other priorities came up with the document. But as of February 2023, there were almost 12,000 comments that had been received so far. And I will just tell you, there was no absolute clear consensus, just do this and everybody in the county will be happy. It just wasn't that way, and you know that, because as elected officials, you deal with that all the time. But there was enough that we felt we knew where the compass was pointing, and so that's kind of how we wrote this. And then again, I'm speaking personally for myself, there were things in the document that were written that maybe I would have done differently as a professional or a consultant, but it wasn't my document. And so we really did try to let that steer what made it onto the pages. And I will tell you, just to share a very quick story with you, I had at least three opportunities that I can remember where folks would come up to me either after a meeting or during a meeting and tell me, hey, you guys are doing a good job. I'm telling you this, that when I get to the podium, I'm going to advocate and I'm going to push, but really, you all are doing a good job balancing things, whether it's transit, or schools, or affordable housing. People, if you really talk to them, we did get feedback that people were understanding that there was a balancing that had to go on here. And so I just wanted to make a comment, again, under the umbrella of implementation and closing remarks. There's been some discussion at the previous council work sessions about kind of turning the dial, and a lot of the questions that have come up have been very specific about how you implement and those kind of things, and that's because the devil's in the details, right? That's where really the rubber hits the road, and you have to worry about getting it right. And so it's sometimes very difficult or very hard in a general plan to just say, are we planting the right seeds? Are we getting the ideas and getting the ball rolling the way we want it to, in a way that we're not going to regret it later? And there's two ways to do that. There's one, to keep it broad, so that you can hone it in during the comprehensive rezoning process, APFO process and the like. Or you need to put enough specificity that you really have set that target. And again, that's the balancing activities that you're going to be going through here in the next several weeks. As you move to feasibility plans and master plans, you talked about transportation and some of the functional plans you have, I think the gateway master plan is going to have a huge amount of interest. I mean, obviously, as we talked about it, there's so much going on, but there's also so much concern about what the impacts might be, can the system support it and those kind of things. And then again, I really do think, just from listening to the previous seven sessions, that the comprehensive rezoning process is going to be equally as strenuous to get some of these details right, to make sure that you really kind of get what you want with the targets that are set within the plan. And then I just want to comment for this evening to get it fresh in our minds that in some ways, you only control 20% of the outcome, right? You have to have the right demographics to support these ideas that you want. You know, I think we had some conversations during housing about, well, do we build multifamily or single family? Who's going to live in them? Remember, we were talking about that a little bit. You've got to get your demographics to match what you want to do. You also have to have the developers who are willing to do what you want to do and the way you want to do it, to deliver the product that you're hoping for, both in terms of buildings and public spaces and those kind of things. And then you have to worry all about the lending community and all that kind of good stuff as well. So even if we get the absolute perfect document, we're still 80% of things we don't really control, but we might influence. And so we need to make sure that all our partners are on board as we go through into the implementation. And then finally, I just kind of leave you with this, and I told you how I mentor young planners when they write a document. Long ago, somebody once told me that, you know, you have to eat an elephant one bite at a time. I think that's still okay to use that phrase. And as part of that, I just tell you, as you look at the 700-plus pages of this document, it's daunting, right? I mean, Ms. Walsh, when you had come in today, it was just so impressive, like carrying that thing in, it just looks, it's massive, right? And so as you go through this process, and the experience I've had, again, kind of working in all different communities, we just have to chunk it up, going back to the way you used to teach our children how to read, right? We have to chunk it up. And so if it's overwhelming as a full document, I counted this morning, there's about 82 pages that actually have policies or implementation items on them. So maybe that's what you focus on, or just go straight to the matrix, and then it's all in one section for you. Then there's the maps, right? And some of those maps are because they're going to be more regulatory in nature, and they're going to really influence outcomes, and some of those are there just for information. And the question is, are they a distraction, are they not a distraction? What do you need to do there with your maps and how you convey information? And then the other part is sort of the storytelling. And one of the reasons I think the document got larger was because you are in a very interesting spot. I said this at the very beginning of this project, the reason I wanted to work with you all is because your plan is going to be hard. And it's going to be hard this time, because as mentioned earlier, you've gone from a suburban model that's been very successful, very successful. I mean, look at all you have, at all the interests you have of people who want to come here, and now you have to start to think, do we want to be urban? And if we do, where? And how much? And those things don't just change over time. In the last section, you're talking about transportation, you know, how frustrating is it to say, we don't want to drive anymore, but we have to wait 100 years until our infrastructure catches up, right? Because of the permitting and funding and all of that kind of good stuff. And so you have to be in transition, you have to enjoy the life while you're transitioning as well. And so that's something you need to think about as you go through this. It is slow and painful, it just is what it is. But I leave you with a way to just kind of, one, from a document perspective, think about how you prioritize really what it is that you need to change. And one of the reasons the document was larger was because we had to tell some of those stories to give context, either whether it's patients or what the target should be in some of those areas, again, 2% of your land that's being contemplated as activity centers. So with that, I do appreciate your time and your patience and your willingness to hire us for the project. It's been wonderful, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to be in person with you today.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh, did you want to go back to the other one, or?
No, I said, I'm going to just, mine's not, I didn't picture it.
Okay. I forgot where we were on the rotation. Does anyone? Okay, well, then I will just start. Can you go back to the what drives investment in the community? Because I'm going to start in the weeds, because that's where I always end up anyway. And just to give context, it's because I've been thinking about some of the things that we may need to do differently as a government, just based on where we are in time. And so when it comes to the two on the left, willing property owners and developers, it's often, I often think of it like water, or like a really slidy slime, for those of you who also have nine-year-olds. And that, like, where you direct it is where it will go. But you can kind of control that, the direction of it, based on your regulations, based on your incentives, based on the things that you do control as a government. And then when I think about the lending community aspects, we've consistently heard that creation of multifamily ownership opportunities is really hard with financiers, because, I guess it's for a variety of reasons. And then also, when it comes to things like ADUs, local banks may not want to finance those, because there's no local comparison. But the government already function, we already do some things as a financer. We do settlement down payment loans, we do through Department of Housing, the whole concept around some of the ag pres and those payments, that is a financing program. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, yes, we control 20% at the moment of this, but what have you seen to really incentivize and make plans come to fruition? So we're not just doing the soil amendments, we're not just doing the seeds, we're actually getting to a full blooming flowering community.
Yeah, good questions in there. So I think, if I were to set the table, I would do it this way. One is, you need to decide as a government whether you're going to have the carrot or the stick. I mean, that's kind of one way to look at this. And the second way is, while you see these five things on the slide, I didn't kind of put them in an order, right? So one of the benefits is, if you have a strong market like you have, people are generating ideas left and right, and usually, the government gets to be the last in the five, right? The property owner has to be interested at least, otherwise they wouldn't be moving forward. You have to have a developer, you hope that developer has done their market research to know that it's supportive. And then you would hope that she or he would have said, yeah, this is a lendable project, before I'm going to spend all this money on consultants and process and so on. So in that regard, when the market's already kind of built in for what you want, it's kind of nice to be the last one of the five, right? Because you get to react to all that information, you get to give feedback, and you get to shape it. So those are the easier ones. The harder ones are where you want to, you know, bend the trend, or you want to shock the system and do something new, and it's the government's idea, and you've got to get everybody else on board, right? And so how do you do that? Well, you can do it through a demonstration project, for which you're the financer and you're the, you know, the lead developer of a partnership or something of that nature. You can do it through financial incentives, sort of as you talked about. You already have programs that might be that last thing that tips people into a direction you're hoping that they move into. I would say those are probably your two biggest opportunities that you go there. And then sometimes, just given the size of the state and the counties and the metropolitan area in here, sometimes your funding partners might be the state or the federal government as well. Maybe you can find a way to spend their money instead of yours. So that's something to think about as well. The most successful communities I work with try to spend a dollar, but track three, you know, kind of a mentality of, you know, who else's dollar can I spend to make this project be exponential?
And just a follow-up to that, I think because we, when we develop, when a property is developed within this county or within this state, you know, we're not just, the community is not just receiving property taxes, we're also receiving income taxes. So, you know, that is what continues that benefit. And so I think that there is a need, even if on the front end, we're putting out, we have those projections to know what we'll get back. And I think that that does, that model sets us apart a little bit as a region or a state.
Yeah, I mean, states that have a local income tax tend to break my financial models, I do, because normally residential's a drain because of education and the other things that have been talked about. But when you have a local income tax on top of everything else, it helps. You know, residential becomes a little bit different of a contributor than it might be in other states you work in.
Right, thank you. Ms. Yon?
Well, I didn't think I had any questions, but now I do. You mentioned that there's this five-year matrix, and I'm wondering, where is the matrix for the 2030 plan? Did I not see it? Is there, does it exist? Is it on the website somewhere that I didn't find it?
I'm sorry, the Plan Howard 2030 plan? Or?
It was my understanding that you take a look at it every five years, right?
That is correct, that the state, part of the state requirement for annual reporting is every five years, we do a report to the state, kind of of what the implementation efforts have been for that general plan.
I think I looked at the Anarundel County plan, and they actually had the five and 10-year matrix in their actual general plan. And I'm just wondering, where's the matrix for the 2030 plan?
The reporting, so.
Our monitoring reports for the Plan Howard 2030.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
Should be on our GPC.
So on the Plan Howard 2030 website, we have a, for that one, we actually did a 2016 short-term monitoring report and a 2019 midterm monitoring report, and that's available on the website.
So where exactly is that on the website?
Sure, so if you go to the DPZ website, you have the Planning and Zoning, look under Community Planning, and then there's a link to the general plan. And then if you scroll down to the middle of the page in Plan Howard 2030, you can open up the monitoring reports.
Okay, thank you.
The last question I have, and I promise about that, is on the, in the implementation chapter, we're going to talk, as we adopt new plans, it's just looking at the other one, so I've lost where it is, but basically, it says. Oh, Hoco by Design policies and actions include guidelines for the functional implementation plans, which should be incorporated as each plan is updated. So I guess with the inclusion of that sentence, as we adopt new plans, they will sort of comport with the previous, the general plan, and then the general plan will link back to them, sort of forward-looking.
It's like that adoption. It's like that adoption by reference.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it. All right. All right, last call for questions. All right, we are finishing at, at 8:45. Thank you all. I'm sorry, seriously, no more questions? Seriously. Mary, don't, don't wring more bites at the apple possible. Oh, wait, Dr. Jones?
Yes. I, I was just going to say, it's been a pleasure speaking with and hearing from everyone, and that I do not have any questions.
Yes, don't scare Mary. Thank you, Dr. Jones. And truly thank you to everyone, it's been a Herculean lift, and I, and I fully believe that none of us anticipated that it would be here, or what we would have gone through from the start of kicking off the general plan. Still bummed I didn't get the board game, but maybe one day. All right, so we will see you all later. Take care, our meeting is adjourned.